Everybody here but Jacob and um. Let's see, we will go right into communications. So first will be Mary, the elementary principal.
Well, hi.
Hi there.
Hi.
Mary, do you mind using the mic at the podium? Thank you.
You're welcome. Hello, is it on?
It is on.
Okay, great. Hello, first update is our picnic that we had at Open House. We raised over $600. It was free will donation and that went to our PAIPAC program. So that's all positive. The PAIPAC people plan to meet, I believe it's in two weeks from today. And so we'll talk about when we can get that program started again, where we were at last year and how we can make that a really effective program that reaches all of our needs moving forward. This afternoon, two bays of swings were installed in the elementary playground. That was a little bit delayed for various reasons, but they're in and hopefully by Friday, we have those stable enough that we can let kiddos back on them again. So, you know, kudos to the playground committee for all the work that they did on that and David. And then finally, a big initiative this year at the elementary is figuring out our MTSS program, which is our multi-tiered systems of support. So that's meeting all of our learners, no matter where they're at. And so we're having some really quality meetings moving forward with what we want that to look like and what we need to do to train our people to do the best that we can to reach all of our kiddos. So, any questions?
Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
I see your actions. A parcel dinner on this one.
No, you're doing a great job.
Okay. I'm looking at the glass. David, you're on next.
Good evening. Well, we are off to, I think, a pretty good start. It's been a week of trial and error and trial and successes. And I think that we're working out some of the kinks that we had. And our theme this year with staff is chaos and thriving in chaos. And I really wanted to stress to staff that it really is appreciated that they have flexibility and that they're able to adjust. We have class sizes that are varying. We have schedules that are, you know, a little bit tight. And so I think that's really been the theme so far this year. And hopefully we'll be able to continue with that. And we've just been trying to let kids know that it's a student-centered school and that we're looking at giving them an opportunity to, you know, drive some of their education, give them some freedom in between classes and during lunch and getting them to, you know, accept responsibility for themselves by giving them some voice and some choice. You know, the first lunch, or the second lunch we have, we're serving grades nine through 12, for example. And the first day was lines down both hallways. And I mean, it was, it was, it was a lot, which was perfectly fine. And so we met, I met with the juniors and seniors the next day. And what I wanted them to do is think about lunch differently than they thought of it since the first day of kindergarten, where you come down and you get in line and you go sit at a table and it's so controlled. And so we, I want them to think about lunch as being 44 minutes of time for themselves. And that means you don't have to go from class and get in line if you don't want to. Go out in the courtyard, go take care of some homework, things like that. And after that, it just became, if you're in there, you don't know that there are that many kids because they're just taking care of themselves and they're not, they're looking at it as 44 minutes of their time. And it's been really good. And it's worked the same way with grade six through eight too. So as we continue to evolve in the block system and look at different areas where we want to improve and work the kinks out, I think it's really going to be important to continue to change that mindset. So I think things are going pretty well. Max and I spent a lot of time asking kids about, you know, what they think about the block system and their classes. And overall, it's been really positive. I think, you know, students who don't like a class don't like a class, whether it's 90 minutes or 20 minutes. But I think what we're hearing is, you know, after second hour, their day is almost done. And it's just, overall, I think it's been a pretty positive experience. So, any questions for me?
Very good. Thanks for the report. I'm sure I'm like everybody else, I was real curious how everything is going. Next is Max, our activity director.
Yeah, so basically I've spent the first week and a day of school just trying to get kids acclimated to what the new schedule is. And I can echo what David said. I've asked as many kids as I can, how do you like the block schedule? And pretty much predominantly, kids say the day goes faster. For me, it feels like it really does, especially if I make it into the cafeteria for supervising the lunches because by the time that second high school lunch is done, there's one class period left for those kids and then school's out. So there's just so few interruptions during the day. If you can picture what the day was like with all the bells going off and, you know, just, it just, and then currently there isn't the study halls in school either. And so we've really noticed a lot less just random walking and people just going in and out of classes and interrupting and different things like that. There isn't the wandering going on because the kids are in class, you know. And so I think that people are generally more engaged. I can say from a student standpoint, the Innovation Center is very full of kids and being used very well, so that's exciting. And if anybody in the state has a great lunch program that pleases all sixth through 12th graders, we could copy them. I think that's always going to be something, you know, that's going to be. But I think if lunch is the greatest concern that people have, then that's a really good thing. I know the first day of school, some of the parents who are working in there, some of these kids out there, I'm sure they're not mine. But they were concerned about where's everybody going to go because the courtyards were pretty full and it was very nice. Well, we did have a rainy day the other day and it didn't seem any fuller than the first day like David was talking about because they've started to realize, hey, I can go down and sit in the old media center. Or today we had some kids in the courtyard, just, I said, aren't you going to eat? No, I'm just waiting for the line to go down. And then sometimes both gyms are available, sometimes one. And so they've really kind of got their routines down after one week. And it's amazing, but they sit at the same table, in the same spot. So if you want to find a kid, you just go with a certain, like, just all creatures of habit maybe or something, but it seems to be going really well. So that's what I've been spending a vast majority of my time on during the day. So I don't know if anybody has any questions for me about anything else.
I have a question, and if you can answer. I was curious still, that's what I've heard too from the students, the day is going by faster. You're really liking it from like the teacher perspective. Is that similar, that they're feeling really positive the day is going fast?
I've really heard some good comments from teachers and from teachers I may not have expected it from. But I think overall, it's been pretty positive there. It's an adjustment and you're looking at, you know, less homework hopefully and, you know, and being available that second half of the class. And I think as we get going, the adjustments will continue. I think it's been pretty positive.
And I think that the unsung hero in all of it is really the teachers because it would, they had to take a positive approach into this. We've asked all of them to make changes out of their routine. And for the kids to be enjoying it, the teachers have to be taking the right approach in the classroom as opposed to a 90-minute lecture or something like that where they would be absolutely bored and wouldn't like the block system. So I know there's not a lot here, but hats off to them for what they're doing. I think it's been good, so.
Good, thank you very much. Next we have our community education director.
Right. Handouts for you guys. Good evening. In your packets there, you'll have the summer 2019 summer rec report and enrichment. This is the report that we give to the city of Painsville and Painsville Township for our annual support. So our numbers are very strong, as you can see. We're requesting the same amount of money from them that we have probably for the past 10 years. So they've been very good at partnering with us. That's how we're able to keep our fees as low as we do and offer that. The next item in your packet is the fall brochure, which you would all have received. So we've got quite a few new programs and activities in there. Again, we do that quarterly, so that would be September, October, and November are the months covered in this brochure. An update on Paws. So a few weeks ago, Matt said, so when, because we were talking about how we have quite a few kids in Paws and he said, well, when is that the most you can take? When is quite a few, what do you max out at? And I said, oh, well, you know, we just keep taking kids. Well, we're at 104 kids in Paws right now. And when I reported to you a year ago, I pulled up the report, we had 78 kids. So our average daily attendance for after-school is over 70 kids. So we've had to totally change. So 70, that's a good number and that's what we have in the summer, every day, all day. But we have four rooms. We have the entire fifth grade wing in the summer. So now we're down to two rooms. We're grateful for those, but we've had to do quite a few changes for logistics. So we, all Paws kids meet in the cafeteria now. We have a system that we're getting down. We're trying to be efficient on that because we literally have seven minutes before the end of school before the buses leave. So if kid's not in Paws, we need to know. And we have some days 30 pre-K and kindergarten kids. So it's a logistic challenge. So we're working on some processes there. The new, I mean, we couldn't be more excited in community, at a course for the community center. But that's going to really help us too for Paws because like right now, seventh and eighth grade volleyball is in there at 3:30. So we have the cafeteria till about 3:25, 3:30. So we have to do all that turnaround, get kids out to different areas. And but with that happening, we'll have that space or the elementary big gym and our room. So there's some challenges there, but we're kind of bursting at the seams. So it's a good thing, but we're trying to be creative there. Yeah, just hats off to our Paws staff for making it work. You know, majority of our staff are parents, so they're coming down from a full day with students and they're hitting it. They have literally 30 seconds between their shift from the school and they're in for Paws. So it's, we're very grateful for them. Preschool report, our four-year-old preschool numbers for this year. AM, we're at 36, PM, we're at 27. So that's 63 students. And plus, so these are students that stay all day. We have 21 AM plus 20 PM. So 41 of the 63, so 65% of our four-year-olds stay all day long in our program. And I would say majority of those stay, come before school and after school with our Paws program. So it's long days for those kids. When they get to us, some of those kids, they're, it's kind of shell shocked the first week. So we're trying to make that as easy as possible for them. An update on the two and three-year-old preschool prep. That was kind of a new, you know, with these large numbers of four-year-olds, we weren't able to offer the three-year-old during the day, which was disappointing, of course. But we just filled our two and three-year-old preschool prep with 18 students for the first session. So that's the October, November session. So we're hoping that goes well. Fitness center report, we just updated the facility with four new pieces of equipment and we can't wait for the community center because then get us out of the hallway with our group exercise. And so we're very excited for that. And last but not least, our Bulldog livestream, we just kicked off. We've broadcasted three games so far. Our first volleyball game, we had 71 concurrent viewers. So at one time, and we had 422 views so far. Our first football game on Friday, we reached 100 concurrent viewers and had 526 views by the end of the game. And football, we pull off right away. So we want to respect the scouting and that. So we'll play those at the end of the, those will be back up on YouTube at the end of the season. So we have grand plans. We've got three new students involved in producing cameras and floor directing. We have grand plans, do instant replay and multiple camera angles, but we did run into some technical challenges that we're working through. So we're hoping each week it's going to get a little bit better. And that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Next we have Donnie, building and grounds.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I don't know if anybody noticed, it was a pain to get around town and I thought maybe I'd get lucky tonight and not make it here, but it didn't work. We did get two fire drills in, one at each school last week, so we got that in. We're hoping to get, I'm hoping to get a few more in before it gets too cold. The more we get in now, the better it'll be. The roofers ran into a little snag up on the roof. They have a little electrical problem up there. There's a few transformers that they had to pull off the wall or we had Haynes pull them off. They're trying to figure out how to form around these and get the steel on to make everything look nice again. The elementary school, they said they'd probably get back to at EM and put the edging around the whole roof. I mean, it's pretty well done, but our roofing is probably about 95% done. Other than that, with the new block system here, we've probably moved in more furniture than we've ever have at this time of year to accommodate the extra kids in each class, which the teachers didn't expect, I guess. But other than that, everything has been going real well. We're still a custodian short. All of our kids that mowed this summer either went to college or quit, except for Jacob. He's still mowing, but if you hear anybody out there that needs work, we sure could use help. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Questions for Donnie?
Yeah, how are we doing on roofs? I have not heard anything about roofs. And remember about five years ago, every time we turned around, we should have these reins? You were in here all night long cleaning up. That's kind of disappeared?
That has disappeared mostly. The biggest problem we had with the last rain is we have rain, or water coming in the auditorium. And we got to have the roofers come up and look at that again. Other than that, we really haven't had any major leaks. I mean, we are in pretty good shape. I'm not saying that, you know, most of the middle school is still 92. I mean, good 20 or so years that we got to do something with, but other than that.
There was a period of time, if we've got all this rain, we had water in all over the place.
Right, yes, we have not had a lot of major leaks. All right, thank you.
Okay, then my part's done and we're passing on to you.
Okay. So we are going to talk a little bit about the indoor air quality piece of this building project. Let me get it up on the screen and then. Okay. So the, what we need to just have a conversation about is this indoor air quality piece of the project. Obviously, the bond that was passed in August included a host of additions, improvements. And the other piece to this was also addressing indoor air quality at the elementary school. Both Kevin and Brett are here from UNESCO. They certainly will be able to answer any questions as well. But I just kind of want to walk the board through the options that we have in front of us. The intent right now is the $16 million bond is scheduled to be sold on September 24. So hopefully that evening, Ellers will be coming to that meeting and she will actually have the sales results for that bond sale that evening. The next phase to this, in order to finish and include this indoor air quality initiative, then we would also be looking at potentially using some other tools or mechanisms that could be bonding that we would do in calendar year 2020. And there is some benefit to not having them all packaged together in one bond sale. So we'll talk about that as we get going through this. If you have questions as we go, just simply ask. I will certainly do my best to answer them. If I can't answer them, either Kevin or Brett probably can assist with those. Okay? So when we started this, and this initially, I think, was part, a piece of the facility assessment that UNESCO completed, they had come out at a work session, oh boy, I want to say maybe November, December, and really kind of talked about initial thoughts as they were in the building, kind of looking at our major systems and what the findings were. The big one was, we really need to figure out how we can improve the ability to cycle fresh air in our elementary classrooms. One of the examples they were using were the CO2 measurements. Once we actually had those classrooms populated with students and obviously there's a need to cycle more fresh air. The other thing that I think was discovered and was a concern is the fluctuation in temperature. There are some rooms that were hot, 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 and then some rooms that maybe were cool. And so how can we try and come up with that temperature control component or have more control or better control over that temperature piece? And then the last one is really just this overall improving the learning environment. If you remember back to UNESCO's initial assessment, they had an image of one of the classrooms that actually was measuring noise pollution. And you had the unit ventilators that were actually kicking out enough noise that would be about the same decibels as a couple of people in the back of a room just constantly having a conversation. So it was really those three components were what we were trying to come up with a game plan to figure out how we could improve that. And the big one, I think that is, they're all connected, but I think the big one is that indoor air quality and being able to cycle in that that fresh air as we need it. So UNESCO was out at the end of August and we met with a variety of the administrative team members. And we sat down and kind of started looking at some possibilities and what it is we could do to address these needs. So this is really what our list or kind of our strategy, so to speak, to address the indoor air quality issue. So the first one would be to go and replace the current unit ventilators, which in your in-drive, there is a map of all those unit ventilators. Essentially, I might be generalizing a little bit here, but typically every classroom has its own unit ventilator, okay? So we would be replacing those unit ventilators with what they are calling or the industry calls vertical unit ventilators. The other piece to this would be.
So explain vertical unit ventilator.
I'm going to let the experts explain that vertical unit ventilator.
Sure.
So the existing unit vents, the majority of them are built through a wall, typically under a window, and it brings in fresh air from the outside through that unit. And if you've walked through any, a lot of times those units end up being bookshelves, all kinds of different things, glove warmers, you know, drying off the mittens, whatnot. But they're, you know, historically notorious for not providing adequate ventilation. A vertical unit ventilator is a unit that is much larger, pretty much sits in the same location as the existing unit vent. But it's a taller piece of equipment, generally goes all the way up to the ceiling level. And then it has ductwork that goes up above the ceiling, similar to where you have diffusers like you do in this room. So a couple of benefits is they're designed to provide better ventilation rates than what these older pieces of equipment were. Another benefit is having that ductwork. So they're much quieter units and they don't put off as much acoustic noise in background because the airflow is going up above the ceilings and coming down through and distributing the air better versus recirculating in one little spot in the space, so.
So when we put those in, directly above them, we didn't put a window?
Directly above.
So if you've taken the same place as the other ones? We, Donnie, put windows and all that, or they're right above that unit ventilator? So it's going to change the outside too?
Well, the new ones would be shifted over.
Oh, okay.
And then it would basically use the piping and put in radiation.
I got you.
So that you're not, you're keeping a whole window there.
I got you.
Because we certainly wouldn't want to take your only exterior window out of the picture, you know.
And they all operate independently?
They all operate independently, correct.
Maintenance?
Maintenance is going to be similar to what you have. You do have newer equipment that will, that, you know, generally has a little bit longer life than a typical unit ventilator that's in place. They're obviously would be new compared to, the majority of the units out there are 1955 and 1962, I believe, when they were installed.
But they would be controlled?
Yes, it would be digitally controlled from digital control front end that Donnie would be able to.
So he would have a way to monitor what's going on?
Yes, he can monitor.
Without being in every classroom.
See, I have two of them now in the other school and I just enjoy that because I can look in there and say that that temperature is great, that temperature is great. That's the only tool I can look at. That was the good ones that we put in last year, I think.
So he can monitor each space. He can also control the temperature in each space with his computer. And he can program the units to operate during occupied periods and then to cycle in an unoccupied mode during the evening to maintain a lower temperature set point. So it's all electronic controls and monitoring.
Okay.
My daughter taught in Gossman, they have that system, and she loved it because first year she had the same problem we did, hot, cold. After the second year, it was great, she said, so. There is something to be said for it. It was quieter, she said.
Anything else?
He had the question about maintenance. What is the maintenance? He said similar, but what is the maintenance?
Well, yeah, so without getting into too technical here, you do have a coil that provides the heat, right? Which is steam over there, so you have a steam coil on it, just like the existing units. You have a blower that blows air across that coil to be able to provide warm air into the space. And you have filters and then you have dampers. So you have a mechanical damper that allows a certain amount of fresh air to be mixed with the air that's being returned from the space so that you're not blowing cold air on. You're mixing, say, zero-degree outdoor air with 70-degree return air. Then it goes across the coil, up through the system and then back down into the space. So you've got moving parts, you've got dampers that move, motors that move, you've got filters that need to be replaced, coils that need to be maintained. So very similar, except for just a little bit bigger unit that's insulated and keeps it a little quieter.
Thank you. Keep going, don't go too far, Donnie.
Okay.
So then the other piece then would be replacing the cafeteria air handling unit, which is, has issues. And so it would be replacement of that. We would be looking at adding moisture control. This is one of the things that if we're going to have these systems set to be able to monitor CO2 and as that CO2 level rises, we want to bring in more fresh air. We need to have some control over being able to suck some moisture out of that fresh air. Otherwise, all you're going to be doing potentially is just dumping very damp humid air. It's not going to create any better environment. So you really do need that ability to control the moisture levels in what you're actually bringing in to the space. They already referenced the digital controls, but the vertical ventilators, the unit ventilators would then be on a central system that would be able to be monitored and digitally controlled from a master's software system that Donnie would obviously have access to. And then this would also include upgrading our main electrical service, excuse me, our main electrical service at the elementary school as well, which it's lived its life and it's ready to be updated. Any other questions about those first five items? Okay? So then additional items, as we talk about improving the learning environment. And, you know, at both buildings right now, we are already in the process of this conversion over to LED. Obviously, there's a energy usage and cost that is appealing to be running LED lights versus the current fluorescent and ballast light systems that are in most of our classrooms. This would extend to exterior lighting. There would also be the building envelope, ceiling. ceiling, and maintaining or taking care of that ceiling of the building envelope to minimize any air leakage. Steam traps, we've been doing a lot of work with steam traps. I think there were roughly 40-ish-
Oh, 130.
But just recently, they finished another batch of 40 or something.
Right, right, yeah.
And so 130 total have been replaced, repaired. We would continue to be able to monitor that and keep those steam traps in repair mode for anything that's defective. Particularly at the elementary school, but this is applicable to both schools, there is some significant heat loss that is just going on right now in our boiler rooms, and it's just due to a lack of insulation, whether it be on pipes or valves or fittings, and so that would be taken care of. Both schools have aged domestic water system and features, and so there'd be some opportunity to be able to address those and update those with greater efficiency. And then lastly, some de-stratification fans would also be components that would go into the gymnasium space at the secondary building. Again, these items more so are talking about that third need, which is that improvement of that overall learning environment. Questions on any of that? All right, so let's talk costs then. So the total cost of this project, as those, in those first two slides, would be just over $3.2 million. Secondary school would have just under $600,000. The elementary school would have the larger chunk with $2.5 million. And then district-wide, when you're talking about recommissioning and some district-wide systems, you're looking at just over $78,000. So the question becomes, how do we actually go and fund that? What are the tools in play that we could use to be able to fund those projects? And how do they actually impact our year-in, year-out, day-to-day operational budget? So we're going to talk about a couple of things here. First of all, I, it would be my recommendation that we do look at having a capital investment from the district. And this would come from a, some of our fund balance. My recommendation, I do believe we could afford roughly about a $350,000 capital investment, $250,000 of which should, I would recommend, comes from our general fund unassigned account. And then the other $100,000, we would actually budget in to a couple of different operating funds that we have. We would be able to budget roughly $100,000 coming from those. So that would be the item for number one. The next two are the same dollars, but there's a couple of different approaches you can do. So long-term facility maintenance. This is funding that right now all school districts are getting. In Painesville, we get roughly about $384,000 annually for long-term facility maintenance. Right now, we are doing number two. We are a pay-as-you-go district. So what that means is, we get, through our levy process, we get the $384,000 of long-term facility maintenance money, and then we are budgeting that money out to different qualified expenses that are associated with maintaining and the upkeep associated with our school buildings. That's the pay-as-you-go system. Okay? There is another tool that's out there with this long-term facility maintenance money that we can use that money to bond. You could actually go, I believe it's 20-year bonds. Is it useful life or is it 20 years?
Useful life, 20 years.
Okay, so most of those would be a maximum of 20 years, but you could actually bond, and basically what you would be doing then is using your long-term facility maintenance to pay the principal and interest associated with that bond debt. Now, there's some upside to that. Because once you go and go through the bonding process with that long-term facility maintenance dollar, now you are putting it out there in a bond, which now is eligible for Ag to School tax credit. So we actually would get some state aid once we choose to actually bond some of our LTFM revenue. There are school districts that actually use this tool as a way to help minimize their residents' tax burden. They will actually use the bonding tool in conjunction with pay-as-you-go. So maybe they earmark 40% of their LTFM revenue and say, we're going to bond that amount, and then the other 60% we're going to use as pay-as-you-go. So you can actually do a combination of these two tools if you would like. Okay? The fourth item on there is what I'm calling energy optimization financing. I think there's other terms that it goes by as well. But this is a system where you're actually really going out in the market and getting a loan. It's third-party financing is what it is. And what you are doing is you are improving your energy efficiency of the mechanical systems in your building, which then you can use the savings that those improvements net you to be able to pay off the principal and interest payment associated with borrowing for that, with those dollars. Again, it's a new revenue source, but at the same time, you're then also dedicating current dollars coming out of your budget to pay for principal and interest. In theory, it should be the savings from the efficiency and the improvement in equipment that funds that principal and interest payment, but that is a principal and interest payment that the district does have to budget for. Okay? Then the last one is the health and safety bonding. So if there are qualified improvements, so for instance, our indoor air quality improvements, when we start talking about those vertical unit ventilators, when we talk about increasing the amount of fresh air that we can cycle into our classrooms, those are health and safety qualified events. Those are the type of things that we could go and actually use health and safety dollars. So again, we could go and bond for those. And again, once you hit the bond market, the Ag to School credit kicks in. So there is some state aid that's going to come back to you as you have that Ag to School credit kick in as well. Now, with the health and safety bonding, that again is something where it's, you're bonding those dollars, and it would be levied on your local property tax levy. So it's not that you have to have an additional principal and interest payment set aside from your current operational budget. Okay?
But that's not a, that doesn't need voter approval?
Correct. That does not-
And neither does the LTFM bonding?
Correct. Yep. Thank you. It's an important point. Okay? So those are kind of the five options that I want to put out there. And then I have a couple of scenarios that I want to run through. But Bruce, do you have a question?
You do. So roofs.
Yeah.
So we ran a bond to pay for roofs, and then we went and got some other roofs. Then we started the long-term facility maintenance. We didn't designate it specifically by any means, but there was an intent to try and prepare ourselves so we didn't have to go back to taxpayers when we needed new roofs. And you just said that in 1992, we stopped some of those roofs on. Isn't that what you said?
We stopped in 1992 roofs.
And when we did the study, most of that, they figured the roofs were 20 to 25-year roofs, except they always lasted longer. But we might have roofs that need it too. And when we're doing something comprehensive like this, where are we at with that?
Well, and I can only, I'm not a roofer, so my qual, my opinion on roof is prefaced with that.
Let's just assume that maybe reasonably, we're going to have to pay for something.
I think that-
Where would that funding come from?
Yep. I think that realistically, the cycle of continuing to do this, every summer doing a component of our roof, is going to be something that is going to continue.
Okay.
We are absolutely going to-
And that's already in the budget, so we're going to-
Well, that's something that, all of these then are going to have decisions that we're going to have to face with our budget. And so that's why I want to talk about those two proposals, because of exactly what you're talking about, Bruce. I think what our fundamental approach needs to be with this is, we have communicated what a tax impact of this project is going to be. That is exactly what we have available to us. We cannot go and do anything that is going to increase that tax impact, because that's not what was communicated to our community.
Correct.
However, I do think that, given where rates are and everything, I think we will have some opportunity to be able to do some of these things. What is it going to mean for roofs? Yeah, we're going to keep needing to, each summer, dedicate funds to keep doing a segment of roof, and that's going to have to happen, whether that comes out of some operating accounts, whether that comes out of what's left with LTFM. All of those things are a component. One of the things that you'll see in this example, I'm not in any way, or would I, recommend that we take our LTFM dollars and bond 100% of our LTFM revenue. That just simply does not make any sense to me because of exactly what you're talking about.
And we don't have anything for maintenance.
Exactly.
Number five, we in this system have already been there.
Correct.
Would want to be somewhat cautious about that. So reality.
I think we're talking about two different scenarios, though. I just want to address that. Because I think if anybody is talking about what was the previous experience with health and safety bonding, and what potentially this experience would be, you're talking about apples and oranges, or apples and-
Similar product. So if we're looking at $3 million, the last time it was $3 million, but it was $16, $17 million. It was going to be financed on safety dollars. It was going to pass without going to the voters. Voters didn't like that very well. But in essence, the question I see coming up here is, so we passed a $16 million bond? Are we talking about 19.3 now?
Well, I think absolutely. There's no, there's no way to do the facility improvement along with the indoor air quality, along with the softball complex, along with everything else that we talked about with our community and doing for $16 million. What we talked about is, what we're asking for voters in this, in a bond for, is $16 million of the total project. But there are other funding mechanisms that absolutely we are going to need to leverage and access in order to do the whole plan. Absolutely. Okay?
Okay.
So let's talk about the first proposal, then. So the first one, obviously, you see the capital investment from the district would be $350,000. The LTFM bond would generate $1.77 million and change. And then the health and safety bond would be just slightly over $1 million. I believe the repayment on that LTFM and that health and safety is in the neighborhood of 15 or 16-year range, is an example that Ellers had run. So what's the impact of a strategy like that? Obviously, the impact is, we have a $350,000 capital investment, so we have to budget for that. And we, $100,000 would come out of some operating accounts that we do have surpluses on. The $250,000 would come out of our general fund unassigned, which we still would be in line with what our board policy is for fund balance and all of that. The second piece, the $1.77 million on LTFM bonding, that would require us to earmark roughly $150,000. It's a slight, it would be slightly less than that, but it would be anywhere from $140,000 to $148,000 or $49,000 annually for the principal and interest. That would be on those bonds. And then the LTFM, or the health and safety component, that would be contingent upon being able to take and fit the health and safety component into the overarching tax impact that was communicated for the $16 million bond project. In talking with Ellers and seeing where rates are and what rates are doing, they are relatively certain that this is something that they think would certainly work out. Obviously, until the bond sale is complete, and we know exactly what kind of rate we received, we won't actually be able to say for 100% certainty if proposal one is even doable or attainable. Okay? I just want to, the other thing I want to remind everybody is, these are, this proposal or this strategy, we would actually implement in calendar year 2020. And we would want to do that for, a primary reason is, we would like to be able to go, and under Ellers' advice, to be able to go on the bond market if we go that route and go in a situation where we would be able to sell bank-qualified bonds, rather than the market that we're pursuing with our general obligation bonds. If you're selling more than $10 million in bonds, you can't go the bank-qualified route. The bank-qualified route actually usually returns your best rates. So we would purposefully want to not have these connected to our $16 million bond sale and wait to have them done in a new calendar year, where then we could pursue the bank-qualified market, which would be most likely at a reduced interest rate than what we would be looking at for our current bond sale. Okay? Again, both of these bonding mechanisms that are in here, actually, the LTFM would reduce the overall tax impact for our residents, because we would be getting some aid for this Ag to School tax credit.
How much is that?
And that's what, we need to actually be able to see the over, the $16 million sale.
A 10% deal?
I don't have the numbers to be able to give you a ballpark. As soon as I do, I'd be more than happy to send it out.
No, it's okay. That's okay.
But both of those entering the bond market would hit the Ag to School tax credit piece. Okay? And then budgetarily, what the district would be looking at is, we would be budgeting $150,000 of LTFM expenditure that would be earmarked for the repayment of principal and interest. Questions on proposal one?
Earmarking that LTFM dollars, like the $150,000, has that been about what we would have available based off of past, you know, if we're giving the 350 or 60, does that leave us enough?
So 384 is what we're, what we're coming up, it's like 39% of our LTFM dollars. So 384 is what we're generating in revenue. So you take the 150 off of it, and let's call it $235,000 annually would be available for the LTFM projects, the pay-as-you-go maintenance projects, the roof component.
Does that cover the roof expense every year with other potential expenses?
So last year, for instance, so prior in the, we just went through summer of 2019. So summer of 2018, I believe, they did $260,000 in roof projects. And this year, I believe-
Did that come from LTFM, or was that the remainder of the bond?
That was the bond.
The original bond?
Yep. And then this year, it was $213,000 was the number. And again, all but, I think, $40,000 of that came from the remainder of the bond. There was just a small piece of that that was paid for out of a capital account.
So we'd be talking about, on the average, having $30,000 left for other maintenance besides roof at LTFM?
And again, I think it also depends upon how large of chunks you want to continue taking the roof projects. If the goal is to keep knocking out $200,000 worth of roof projects every year, yes, you're absolutely right.
I'm not worried about the goal. I'm worried about the need. It's not the goal to spend $200,000. It's the need to spend $200,000, and will we need to spend more then?
Well, and I think, I think the reality is, given the type of roofs that we have, we are going to continue to keep doing the rounds with replacing our roof segments. Absolutely.
Didn't UNESCO give us a whole proposal of long-term projects to get it on track on everything?
So they have a master plan?
Yeah.
Yes, that absolutely. So what would have to happen with that master plan, though, is we would have to take how we're going to solve the indoor air quality component, and all of that needs to then be factored into the master plan. Because right now, the master plan is built with doing nothing. It's just simply there. And they've basically taken our assets and kind of put them in condition, and what kind of shape they're in, and what priority they should be. But the reality would be is, once this is a project moving forward, then I think the next step is to engage UNESCO to say, okay, this is where we're at. Now let's take that master plan and let's rework that and see what are our top priorities.
So we didn't have a future, they didn't give us a future plan. I'm just trying to remember the thing. It was just more of where- It was just more of where everything's at.
They just talked about quality report more than...
When things should be addressed.
We didn't hire a service from them at that point in time.
Right. But when things should be addressed and a lot of them were past having to be addressed. So this would help catch some of that up and then do we have the LTFM to continue to address those on a planned basis?
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Okay?
Yep.
Did you have the answer to that question?
I think the question was about approximately, how much of the, of this project, this option one would be paid by the state with the egg to school credit? And approximately of the bonded debt, about 25% will come in via state aid, the egg to school. Now that's when it's fully implemented at about 70% egg credit. Currently, it's at 50% and it's in law to graduate to 70% over three years' time. At that point, about 25% of this would be state aid of that 3 million dollars.
Okay. Is, so can we take the 3 million dollars simple terms and the net cost should be somewhere around 75% of it?
Locally, locally, yes. Yeah, so the local taxpayers will bear about 75% of the burden. This, the, around the state, their collections throughout the state will pick up the other 25% generally speaking.
Okay. Can we go on to proposal two?
Go for it.
Okay. So proposal two looked very similar to proposal one. And so the only difference here is again, the capital investment is still there. The bonding for the LTFM is still a part of the proposal. The thing that is switched out then is taking, rather than using the health and safety bonding option, now it would be pursuing this energy optimization financing. The dollar amounts still roughly are going to be the same in each of the categories. So now rather than doing the LTFM bonding that we would then have to earmark roughly 150,000 annually for principal and interest payment, now you would also have this energy optimization financing that roughly should be in the ballpark of 91,000 is roughly what the principal and interest payment for that would be. Now again, the whole premise of an energy optimization project is that the improvements will gain efficiencies and we will see operational expenses reduce in order then to fund that principal and interest payment. That is the premise of these energy optimization plans. Now, the reality is when I'm talking about just implementing a budget, from budget year to budget year, what we will need to set aside would be our budgeted 150, 150,000 for our LTFM bond repayment plus a budgeted 90, 91,000 estimated for a, and the energy optimization principal and interest. So that is really the difference here is the other component to this is if, what I see is the big difference between proposal one and two is proposal one would actually allow that savings of the energy optimization project, the savings in actual operation of that equipment, that would be able to be recognized within our general fund and be able to give us some flexibility with what we would do with those funds. Maybe that means the 90,000 that we would be saving in increased energy efficiency would be dedicated to our roof or something along those lines. So that's what makes this a little bit of, it's not really comparing apples and apples because they're two different mechanisms and so it becomes, it can be more difficult than just simply trying to do an analysis on paper on it.
Is there somewhat of a projection on what the energy savings would be to even know like comparatively like what portion would...
So in order to do the energy optimization, you actually have to submit a very detailed plan that actually has a very structured savings mechanism to it and then UNESCO or whoever would be part of that would have to be willing to guarantee those savings as well for the district. And so to go down that route, to answer your question, yes, you would get a very detailed description of exactly what those estimated savings would be and then there would be some testing and calibration that would go along with it to make sure that you ensure that you're actually, the project is performing as it was intended and there is the actual savings.
So if we wouldn't, let's say it'd be savings of 50,000, the extra money, does that come out of, where do you pay that principal and interest payment from?
Say that again.
So let's say the energy savings isn't the 91,000, like it's 50,000.
It needs to be.
It just has to be.
It has to be, yes. And I don't know Kevin, if you want to talk a little bit more about that, you're...
Well, yeah, it's under statute. It's 123B.65 and it allows for qualified energy conservation companies to essentially put these types of programs forward. They're bonded and then they're also guaranteed by the balance sheet of the organization. And so that the organization lets us say that in your scenario, we said that there's going to be 90,000 worth of savings and when we, when we measured it at the end of the year, there was 50,000 worth of savings, we have to make up the difference under statute on our contractual obligation. So you will get the 90,000 savings. The other thing all odd too is superintendent Bullard kind of made a list of some of the types of improvements, things like LED lighting. Pretty simple, right? If you're going to use the lights the same amount of time during the year, but instead of using 24 watts, now we're going to be using 12 watts, about half the energy out of the lighting systems, that's very easily measured and verified. And so we're not doing anything that I would call overly complicated, using a bunch of control sequences or anything like that. We're putting in equipment that is more energy efficient and that's why we feel comfortable that we can guarantee those results.
So we're not the first ones. Maggie was asking about a possible saving. What's the range? So we're not the first someone's, what kind of money are these people saving when they're doing that? Are they saving a 10% of their...
Typically, typically on these types of improvements, especially when we implement LED lighting, we're probably in that range of 15 to 20% of your overall utility budget. And again, so we haven't done anything too drastic or anything like that here. Again, it's, we're just shaving a little off the top. So as superintendent Bullard said, you're still going to budget for it. Right now it would be, it would show up in your utility budget. That will go down by 90,000 and what'll go up is a PNI, a principal and interest payment. Now the secret here is where I thought you were maybe going with that is we believe there's more than 90,000 worth of savings because we're hedging our own little bets. And so that typically we over-deliver savings by in the range of 5 to 15%. And that's what energy services companies do is that we kind of hedge our bets. So there's going to probably show up a little bit more in your general fund than what we're, than we're promising.
So we're basically setting aside 150,000 to repay an energy optimizing bond. Is that what I'm reading up there?
91,000.
91,000.
Yeah.
Okay. And our savings is maybe 20% of whatever the budget that we're spending on that, those expenses right now are.
Yeah, and I don't know, do you know the specific?
Well, it essentially is going to be roughly 90,000.
Yes, but do you know the percentage of their overall utility spend?
Uh, not offhand, but it's probably...
But is that 90,000 over 15 years?
Annually.
No, each year.
Annually. So you've got the room in your annual budget so that on a cash neutral base, just budget neutral basis, you can pay for it. Again, the advantage is that it's neutral to your budget and you're not going out to your tax base. The disadvantage is those are 90,000 that could be used in your general unreserved. And so I think that's what the point you're trying to make.
So that's the question I have. The difference between proposal one and two is 91,000 that we will save on the second proposal, but we'd also save on the first proposal.
Correct.
Okay, that's...
You will. Correct. Yeah. That's exactly the, that is exactly the difference between proposal one and proposal two.
Well, except that we don't have to go to the taxpayer for proposal two.
Neither proposal.
Oh, for neither proposal.
Correct.
But one is a tax impact and one isn't.
So, well, okay, I didn't mean we'd go to, I just meant there would be an impact on proposal one, there wouldn't be a proposal two.
Well, let me be very clear though. Let me be very clear. There is, there is a, there is no great, no tax impact beyond what we communicated would be the tax impact of the 16 million dollar bond. That is the tax impact.
Right.
That is in either one of these proposals. Neither one of these would have the ability to exceed that. That is not on the table, that's not something that we can even, that's not a, an avenue we can explore. Okay?
I was just going to ask something about the general fund. So having 91,000 for like you and your administrative team, what does that look like five, 10, 20 years down the road as we're looking at, you know, are we going to be eating away at our general fund? Like what impact would that make to us administrators and decisions you can make? Is that a good question to ask?
Well, that is a, that is a hard question to answer, but I think the, the reality is 91,000 is a significant impact. You know, if you're asking what my opinion is of proposal one or proposal two, I would recommend that we explored proposal one first. I believe that's the most efficient way to go about this and I believe it's going to give the district the greatest flexibility with general fund dollars in the long run. I also look at this, when, when you say that you're earmarking 150,000 for principal and interest payments out of LTFM bonding in either proposal, I look at it as in proposal one, you're also collecting some savings of this energy efficiency of new equipment and so truly the net out of pocket for the district. In proposal one, I would argue it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of 60,000 and in proposal two, it's going to be 150,000 is how I would analyze the two of them. So, yeah, I think that 91,000 is significant and it's, it's something that would, would be of importance as we move forward.
The simple questions I see coming my direction on this is we talked about a 16 million dollar bond. We talked about the amount that that was potentially going to cost. We got approval from the public. We happen to be at a time where the bonds have gone down and we are just going to fill in and spend the rest to do this.
Well, the reality is Bruce, regardless whether the bonds go down or the bonds come back at exactly what we estimated, what we told our public in the estimations, we are still on the hook to do this. Part of what we talked about was an indoor air quality initiative and so I don't care if the bonds come in at 4%, like what we estimated to our public, we're still coming back to this table and we're going to figure out how are we going to get these dollars in order to deliver what we talked about to our community.
So we would be addressing this regardless if that 16 million dollar...
It's going to happen regardless.
If the referendum did pass, we would still be having to deal with this issue.
There's issues that have to be done.
It's a separate issue, it's tiny.
This isn't, this isn't, you know, we talked about the 16 million dollar project and that's what was voted on and so that's where we're at. The indoor air quality was an integral part of that. When I went to talk to people, I was explicit with them that we still need to work out the final indoor air quality initiative, but what I'm telling you is this is what the tax impact of what we're going to be proposing to do is going to be for you. I'd say we are just in a very fortunate place where we are actually going to probably sell 16 million dollars of bonds at a significantly reduced interest rate that's going to give us some additional flexibility.
So if rates go crazy between now and then, both these proposals are scrapped and we come back and...
And we're going to come back and figure out proposal three, four, five and, but we're still, we have to address the indoor air quality at the elementary school, period.
My kids go there and I agree. That needs to be addressed. Sooner than later.
Yep.
Is it fair to ask UNESCO what they would recommend or is that not...
No, you can ask UNESCO.
If you, if this was your school district and you were making the decision based off of all your expertise to schools you work with, what would you recommend?
Again, a hard question to answer. Again, we don't, we don't have a horse in the, in the race, but I will say this, that when we, when we first surveyed, we advocated to survey the community, right? We asked two questions. We asked, okay, what, what tax tolerance do you have in two different ways? 16 million, it was what came back, but it was also based upon how much does it affect me, right? And so that people were making decisions and then if you ask school perceptions, they would tell you that it's less about this number, the 16 million, and it's about how did you impact my, my personal pocketbook? Couple of things happened since we surveyed in a positive way. Egg to school increased from, from 40% to 50 on a, on a trajectory to 70%. That helps the agricultural community. That's additional state dollars that's going to come and pay for your bond. And so that's, that's, that's going to be some benefit already that's affecting part of your community. And then again, part of the proposal is to, to bond your existing LTFM revenue, about which on an average, on 150,000, another interesting tidbit is, I'll find this because I was just looking it up, for that 150,000, you only levy about 120,000, maybe 115,000 locally. So the state is picking up part of this as well, if you want to look at it that way. Well, again, with the increases in the egg to school, it kind of creates a unique opportunity. We've got lower interest rates, we have now 50-year low interest rates. You're going to have a very favorable result here in a couple of weeks when you sell your bonds. That's going to create benefit for all of your constituents. And then the other part of it is now you've got, for your egg community, you've got a much lower burden from the 16 million bond and it does probably create some room. So again, you hearken all the way back to that community survey, what were they making decisions on? How did you respond to it? Did you, were you as concerned about the 16 million or how much does it impact my personal, you know, paycheck and, and bank account? And so that's why I look at this as an opportunity perhaps. So we discussed it, we round tabled, we recognize some of the, the, the past experiences of the community and so that we're very, we're very sensitive to those. But again, as superintendent Bullard says, these, we, part of this bond referendum was the promise that we're going to take care of these issues and then, and then, but we're not going to exceed the tax, the overall tax impact on what you told us to adhere to. And I think that's what it is, creating 90,000 of budget flexibility in your general unreserved, an unrestricted fund for any school district is a real positive. And that's, that's why if, if I were making this decision as a board member, not as a person, as a consultant standing before you, but as a board member, I, you know, I, it's a discussion I could have with my constituency and to say, here's why we did this and I think this sets us up for the, for the long run. We're, we're hitting you the same or less than what we, than what we said we would and it creates some, I'm not going to have to come back to you in the form of an operating referendum or a future bond referendum to fix roofs and that sort of thing. So again, one person's opinion, but you asked for it, so.
Other questions or other thoughts?
My concern is going to be that, you know, I feel we have more community members that were sold on the 16 million dollar project that included all these things. We saw a mailer out that said it's going to include pickleball courts and it's going to include indoor air quality, it's going to include, and it's all going to cost 16 million dollars. And we're going to turn around and tell, hey, we got a better rate than we thought, but instead of saving you money, we're going to turn around and spend more money to actually get done what we told you we'd get done in the first place for 16 million dollars. That I think is going to be our number one hurdle. That'd be my number one hurdle to have that conversation. So I understand the challenges that we're going to face with the project for 16 million dollars with the scope of work that we discussed with the community members, but I also feel that, you know, we're going to have a harder, a bigger hurdle as, as a board convincing people that we didn't want to save you money, we wanted to get the project done, but we promised to, and we're not charging you any money, which is great. That's, that's wonderful, but, you know, we promised 16 million dollar project that's going to cost 19,500.
I know that I heard Matt say on more than one occasion that these, what he's talking about here are going to be addressed and we are going to have to figure out whether or not it passes.
I'm not going to say, I guess, I heard that too, but did all your...
No, I, I hear where you're coming from for sure and I don't know how to answer that, so somebody's going to have to...
That wasn't discussed in the mailer. That wasn't discussed, you know, we're going to...
I mean, we're not doing, we're not doing air conditioning, you know, things like that have been thrown out there and...
And I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not for this. I want to see the best project we possibly can.
I agree, I agree with what you're saying.
For the best dollar that we can spend. I mean, that only makes logical sense. If I'm building this house and I'm doing this, I'm looking at my alternate options to get more for the same amount of money I tend to spend per month. I'm certainly looking at that myself, but I'm also looking at the fact that I'm going to get, you know, the same people bumping into me at fleet supply, wondering why we didn't opt to save them money, why did we opt to, you know, spend more? That's the question.
And I personally told people, this is going to happen either way.
Yeah.
I don't even want to think about this as being contingent on you voting for the...
But if we don't do, if we, we stick at 16 million, what other options can we look at saving from to make sure that the indoor air quality, because I agree, this is a key part of it. This is almost as big a part as the gymnasium. So what else do we have to cut? What else would we have to cut in order to do this from the facility? I don't want to cut from the facility no more than anybody else does, but what other options do we have? other, what other options do we have?
I think there's a couple options. There's always options. I mean, we have option to stay at, to not address these and cut parts of the plan. We have an option to go back to the community in a few years, or we have an option to use, you know, right now it sounds like kind of the time is right when it comes to interest rates, and taking advantage of the situation we're in versus waiting three, four years from now and addressing something where, you know, where the interest rates will be. We're kind of in a sweet spot that we didn't know we would be at, and I think, I mean, that's unpredictable. So I think we do have options, but I think there are long-term consequences also if we wait, or if we cut things. We're still going to have to address these, so.
Correct.
I don't know what the interest rates will be in four or five years we go back to the community again. Those are all options that we have to, like, talk through, but, I mean, I think we were all surprised and shocked when we heard how low the interest rates were, or how, you know, where this was going to end up. But we're going to have to address it. You know, I think most of us went to the school board training in January, and a lot of different districts where I was, in some of the sessions where they're looking at different funding options to get what needs to be done in their community, and thankfully, there's different things that are, you know, like the 70% ag tax credit, things like that they're changing to help especially rural communities to address these things, others, how are we going to get this done? And so I, I think it's, I appreciate your comment, because I guarantee that's what people are going to be talking about. But I think if we're talking through long-term, what are the, there's going to be consequences either way, and I should, maybe not consequences, but there's going to be, we're going to deal with things either way, so where, where are we at? We can wait.
And I, I don't necessarily know that I would agree that the reality is, is what are we going to cut from the project in order to do this? I don't see that as being any more favorable than what's being talked about here tonight.
Correct.
Um, I, I guess I look at it from the overall perspective. If what we were talking about in the, uh, presentations and communications prior to August 13th was an overall tax impact, and if at the end of the day, we can use these other, um, tools available to us and deliver that or less of a tax impact than that, than we talked about with our community, I think that is a very prudent way to go about addressing all of those needs.
I don't think anyone's arguing with it.
And I think the reality is, I think there's a very good chance that even with the indoor air quality component, using the LTFM, using the health and safety and the capital investment, I think we actually can have a, less of a tax impact than what we communicated with prior to the vote on August 13th. I still think it will probably be less than, than that. But I don't necessarily agree that the idea is, okay, let's go and modify the, the project now in order to, to get this piece completed. That, to me, is, um, I don't believe that should even be on the table.
Matt, can I ask a question? We're generating additional income because we're selling a bond of LTFM, right? Not, it's not just the additional income because the rates are lower than the elders projected with the project.
Well, essentially, I mean, it's, it's a bond process, and so when you bond, it allows you to, uh, collect that state aid associated with the ag to school, um, credit. However, that, I mean, that bond process is really, you're guaranteeing a debt that you're going to repay, and so you set up an amortization schedule, and you repay that debt with principal and interest.
But you have the option to save the taxpayers $3 million by not doing this indoor air quality project. Meaning, like, if you take that off and you just do the project as it was sold without the indoor air quality, your project price is not going down to $13 million.
The indoor air quality is part of the project. It was part of the 16.
Correct.
But we couldn't take a bond out for less to save, is what he's?
No, I, I get, I think what your question is, and Kevin, by all means, you can, you can add to this, but, yes, correct. If this isn't done, the idea isn't that the, rather than doing the 16 million dollar project, that it would be a $13 million project. That is a correct statement, yes.
But you're getting from 16 to 19 by using LTFM dollars and other things without increasing the tax base of other people, so it's, they're paying that tax.
Correct.
Whether you go from 16 to 19 anyways, and you just choose to use that money to do the roofs or to do anything, we've been putting $25,000 in the boiler, which that isn't going to be there. So that's the, that money's going to be, that money is going to be levy here regardless. It's a matter of whether it's levy for this project, or it's levy to redo the courtyard, is what I'm getting.
Correct, yes.
It has nothing to do with the sale of the bond and the fact that we, we don't have an option of saving people money. They're going to be taxed what they're taxed.
The, the concern would be, and, and, uh, we, we do this, we budget $150,000 out of the, the LTFM, and we only have $380 to spend, and now we need to spend $250 on a roof, major roof leak, and we need a courtyard project. Now where do we get the money? That's, that's, that's a concern.
I think it's more perception. So we here can convince ourselves any way we want to. Um, it's, you know what I mean? And I can, I, I understand that we need to do it for the kids, and we need to do all that, but I understand exactly what Thomas said. It said in that survey, air quality. It did. Okay? And when the information packets came out, or I meant to say information packet instead of the other, it said 16 million dollars. I didn't talk to anybody about this. My only discussion with people was, they said, well, if it costs less, will we get a savings? All I told them is I don't see any incentive, um, from people building or anywhere else to give you a good deal, once you've already decided on the number. We may get some, and we're hoping you guys can help us there, but these are, these are estimated numbers that are probably pretty close. You're not going to have a savings there. Now, we're in a situation where the bonds went down on that one, and we're, we're just filling it in. I guess I didn't know this was going to be $3 million. I don't remember some, seeing a number ever. Um, I knew we had issues to address, but I didn't see $3 million. Well, it is a 19 and a half million dollar project, though. As we start putting together. Our issue is the perception of the public. Now, obviously, this is on camera. People are going to see this thing. Um, we're probably going to find out here pretty quick, but people think about that. But one of the things we have tried to do on this board is always to be very, very straightforward word. We have built a lot of trust in the public. We, however we're going to explain what we're doing, it cannot violate that trust that people have in this board, because we have other things. Most important being, we are someday going to need an operating levy. Straight away, every school needs it. But you can't be upsetting the public, um, whether it's perception, whether it's reality, whether we can justify it, and maybe it's going to take something in the paper, explaining exactly what we're talking about here. You also can't have people looking at this as funny math. Does anybody think that some of the government is full of funny math? Yeah, it kind of looks that way most of the time, right? We can't be participating in that. We have to have a total basis of exactly what we're doing and the justification for it. So if this is a standalone, and the other's a standalone, then we have to see where the public is at. But we were here. This district was here, and we got in a lot of mess over the thing, because under the first proposal, last one, there was authorized by the board a 16 million dollar, um, project. Nobody voted on it. $16 million. That went over like a little bloom when it hit the public. We just don't want to be there. I don't know. It'll be perception. Can we justify it? Am I interested in having the kids? My grandkids are in the schools over there. I'm interested in the air quality. I thought that was the most fascinating part I had. I just never, I wasn't sure I was equating this. Right? Um, I didn't know necessarily that it was a replacement of a whole bunch of interventilators, which some are relatively new. Right? So we're going to just throw them away. Um, because, Don, you've been, I don't know how recently, but you were replacing those, like, on a regular basis. So we are going to just make junk out of something that's probably not junk. Do we know for sure? Just questions that, what if we were in a room with a bad fan, with the decibel problem? Okay, that fan's going to make noise. This fan's going to make noise if something goes wrong with it. So, it's, it's a, it's a perception issue. And we, the board, um, have gone through this far pretty smooth, but we'll see what the public has to say about this. And I, for as far as I'm concerned, best discussion we can have in front of the public so that people know exactly where we're at, and what's going through our mind. We all probably know we have to do this. Right? I don't think there's a question we have to do it. But comparing it to what we passed, we have, I would say we passed it with a, a large margin, and people trusted exactly what we did. Do we maintain that with another three? I don't know that, no answer. I'm sure we're going to find out.
So does the additional three cost some additional tax dollars, Bruce? From what we, from what we just got done?
I'm just, only you can, you can justify.
And I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
That additional three, if you're assigning that, the health and safety bond is a bond that we can do, but what are the taxes on that? We're not paying for that right now. The LTFM, we're probably paying for, so that's basically a wash, but there it goes.
No, the LTFM bonding, your LTFM is going to lower your overall tax rate. Because right now, we cannot get any ag to school credit or state aid with LTFM bonding.
Let's put some numbers on it. Let's put some numbers on it. So I'll go back to you with the question. How much is it going to cost everybody for a million one on the health and safety bond and your taxes? How much is it going to cost on a $100,000 house, right? We always talk about that. What's $100,000 cost on the LTFM bond that we're not paying right now, and what is the savings? That's what the public's going to ask us. I'm just asking, we have to justify this to somebody. And today, when I leave, I don't have the justification to tell somebody tomorrow when they watch the recording of this meeting.
If it comes down to, because of the sale of the bonds and saving some money for the next year, so it saves some $2 on what they're going to be paying, but we have to add this on, so it adds another dollar on, they're still saving a dollar. I can justify that.
If I know that that's?
If we know what it is.
I think we could probably?
If we know what it is.
But it's something you can explain to them.
Okay, time, whoa, 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 we got, we got, we got back the train up just a little bit. Because that's, that's the other piece that I guess I thought, I thought I was clear, and maybe I wasn't clear. I just want to make sure I'm very clear on this. The tax impact that was communicated for the August 13th bond referendum, that tax impact is set in stone. No matter how we would go with proposal one or two, I don't see any way that we can exceed that tax impact. I'm actually very hopeful that on September 24th, we're going to get good news on our sale, and that even with the bond sale of 16 million and proposal one or proposal two, we actually, all residents would see a smaller tax impact than what we were communicating with people prior to August 13th. That is, that is clearly?
As for our meeting last time, when they were here last time, that's exactly what we heard, that it was going to go down based upon that bond.
Elers.
Correct. So I just want to be very clear that none of this, it would be in motion, none of this would be proceeding with these other bond avenues in 2020, if the overall costs and tax impact of these bonds exceeds what we talked about prior to the August 13th, um, bond referendum. To me, that's not even a conversation that's on the table that we can?
I think the public still will have that conversation.
That we can have.
Yeah, I think the public's going to have that conversation. Now, I'll go back a little bit about what was said earlier, is that if you went for $16 million, and it dropped from X to a lower X for that $16 million, based upon our timing and bonding and all the rest of that, I never asked anybody if I could spend all the rest. I didn't ask them for another $3 million. I didn't ask them for any of that stuff, the people I talked to, because I didn't know this information. I have to have a sound basis to go back and say, this is where it looks like it's going to lay out, and?
But this is, this is like, all the stuff that we said was going to happen, I mean, this is part of that, and it's not like we're being opaque by saying, oh, this was going to happen anyway. I mean, this was going to happen anyway.
So what, what of air quality is in the $16 million? Answer me that.
Well, I think the, the, the real component that is in there that has to do with the air quality is the boiler room updates, and the, um, the, the replacement of the boilers along with the controls that are in those boiler rooms. I think that is a component that is going to, when you go back to what those first three needs are, that is a component that is, is a piece of this, and, and plays into overall indoor air quality. Now, is that sufficient? And can we just say we're going to replace the boilers, and that's going to take care of the indoor air quality issues at the elementary school? No, that's not sufficient. There are still other things that will need to happen. But part of that 16 million is going to be funding that, that boiler replacement.
There is financial advantage to doing this at the same time that the other stuff is going on.
Absolutely.
Right. I'm not sure any of us don't understand that. It's a perception. So, uh, for me being on this board, as to what we are telling the public, as compared to what we can perceive and what we can justify, um, with the numbers, um, that's, that's a little bit different sale. And we didn't have an idea of $3 million. So when did that come up before? Anywhere? First night? A $3.2 million, right? Okay, so, we are sitting here, we passed a $16 million bond, and now we're facing down the throat of $3 million. We all can justify it based upon the bond's going down and their taxes aren't going up. But I actually wasn't prepared to go back to the public and say the bonds didn't go down, and tell them their taxes were going to be higher than what we proposed. I didn't really talk to anybody about that.
But I don't think we're, what I've kept saying, Matt, is that we're not going to increase the taxes, no matter what.
Yes, no.
No matter what, we're not going to do that. We're going to have to find some other way of doing this if we have it.
Right. If our original expectation, the $16 million bond is going to cost $6.5 for a $168,000 home, right? And where those projections came in, the, the, the rates in that bond is going to sell exactly what we projected, and we have $16 million bond, would we talk about $3 million today?
Say that again.
Would we be talking about $6, the $3 million additional date? If the projection on the rates were exactly what we thought they were when we told the public it was?
Yes. You're still going to be talking about the indoor air quality that's in front of you right now.
For an additional $3 million, and we would be raising their?
No, no, no.
No, we would have to come up with a way to do it that's tax neutral.
Yeah.
Then that's the, I mean, yeah, it, it would have to come up with a way that it would be tax neutral. Realistically, if, if that were the case, Thomas, we would probably be looking at proposal two as what would be on the table in front of you. Because we can go and sell those $16 million bonds, and we can do one, two, and three, and those don't impact taxes in any way, shape, or form.
So we can sell those bonds and take care of the whole works, and it's not going to change anybody's taxes?
Correct.
That one's done.
The question?
If the $16 million didn't pass, and we did that one, we're in essence spending $3 million for free.
Say that again.
Say the $16 million is out of this picture.
Yep.
Okay? And we have that.
Yep.
We could spend $3.2 million, and it wouldn't cost anybody any money in taxes.
There, actually, in this, right here, the $350,000 is coming from fund balance. That doesn't impact taxes. The $1.77 million is LTFM bond, that would actually decrease taxes because we're getting an ag to school credit. The energy optimization financing is third-party financing, that we have to guarantee $91,000 savings in our project, so our overall expenditures and utilities would go down by $91,000. That's what we would pay the principal and interest. That would not impact anybody's taxes.
So what we're really saying is if on that $100,000 house at $16 million, this was anticipated, I thought they were going to pay, but because of the financing, they're going to pay this, but we're going to do this, and they're going to pay this.
No. No, they're saying, what I'm saying in front of you is there's two proposals. There's proposal two, which we can go ahead, and Kevin, correct me if I misspeak, but proposal two will not impact a property tax.
In fact, proposal two does exactly what you say. If you said that 16 million dollars and you're going to pay this, or you were going to pay this, and now because of the bond rates, you can do this work and you're still just going to pay this because you're not impacting the taxes anymore. You're going to get all of the savings from the reduction in interest plus, and we did math over the 15 years of an earmark, you talked about 15 years of 150,000 earmark, that's going to result in state aid of about 510,000. So they're actually going to go down lower because of option two. Option one is if you said you're going to pay this for the 16 million dollars, that's what you're paying, and maybe a little bit less. And I think that's what option one is. So option two is they're going to pay this and lower if you put this project into a force. Option one is they're going to pay the same as what you promised them on in May when you sent out your mailers.
So option two, our biggest issue would be spending 150,000 of our LTFM dollars every year and leaving ourselves with 230. That would be our biggest potential handcuff in the future.
Correct, that would be the biggest budgetary impact. And so that's really the difference between one and two, is one would give our general fund the most flexibility, and it would be, one's only a possibility because of potentially the low interest and the savings that we are looking at with that bond sale. That's the only reason one is even on the table for discussion. So maybe on September 24th, maybe we come back and the bonds are sold at 4% like we communicated to our public, and then our decision is made for us and proposal two it is. But I guess if not, and I hope that those bonds are not sold at 4%, and it's much lower than that, then I think we should have some serious consideration about proposal one. And that's the purpose of this conversation tonight is to be able to educate everybody about what proposal one is and to be able to go out and have conversations about that. But I just want to be very clear, neither one of these proposals is asking for additional tax dollars based on what was communicated to them with tax impact of the project.
And I think the other thing is that regardless if we didn't pass, if we didn't add on anything or upgrade anything, we would still be doing this. I mean, we'd have to.
Yes.
For the sake of our kids.
Yes.
Regardless.
Yes.
So in a sense, they're two different issues, but they've been combined.
I think that's what Bruce has just been trying to say, is that, you know, this had to get done anyway, but it felt like we're telling people, this is going to get done in this vote. You vote yes, and you get the air quality. Like it was wrapped into their dependent on it.
I think the information I received about the, it didn't say it was wrapped into the 16 million, but it said we were going to have to address it. I think that's.
And I was explicit when I met with people that that was a frequent question that I did receive, and I was explicit to tell them that the piece of, the only piece of air quality that is in here are boiler replacements. But there has to be an air quality initiative, particularly at our elementary school, to address those concerns that we are aware of. And that is something that we will use other funding sources to be able to.
And I heard you say that because I'm listening for that specifically.
Sure. And part of it is, there's other parts of the project that we can't use LTFM dollars for, correct? So this would be a place where we could earmark it and get the extra savings, right? Because not all things can be used for those dollars, so it makes sense to use this funding mechanism for that.
So obviously, you've been on this stuff before, or somebody? Who's the numbers person? What does it look like based upon the savings? What are the parameters and some of that? That basically, we could have a sheet to show somebody that we're going to spend this 3.2 million dollars and it's free. Not going to impact their taxes.
And that is exactly what Ellers is waiting for. In order to do that, though, Ellers needs to have.
They will give us a basis, so we have something to show people. That this 3.2 million dollars didn't impact them at all. So if their taxes were going to be 55 dollars and the bond saved them, so now it's 45 dollars, they're going to still pay 45 dollars and we're going to get this done.
If you go with proposal two.
Proposal two.
Yeah. Absolutely. But again, none of that, those hard numbers that you want, those really are dependent upon the final outcome of the bond sale on the 24th. And so then that's when you can actually see those hard numbers. And again, proposal two is, it is proposal two. I just think that there is potentially an opportunity to explore proposal one, depending on the outcome of the bond sale on September 24th.
And we can take care of all the business for that on the 24th.
You are not going to be.
I mean, for the sale.
You, the bond sale, you've already taken care of the business for the bond sale. We will actually get the bond sale results on the 24th. And then you will authorize and certify those on the 24th. Then from there, we are not, you will not be seeing proposal one, proposal two at the 24th board meeting. This is something that you would actually, again, it's just for your information at this point, and it's something that come calendar year 2020 is when there would actually need to be a definitive decision made with the direction that the district is going. That is the last slide on here. So kind of moving forward, September of 2019, there will be the bond sale for the 16 million, 90,000 of bonds that was authorized on the 13th. In October, and I think even we can have conversation October into November, we, the board should determine what course of action they want to take for the indoor air quality initiative. How do we want to complete that work? That would give us late 2019, early 2020, to then be able to incorporate that into any final scope of work. We could finalize LTFM and health and safety bonds if those were needed as a part of that. And then it would also be able to align nicely with the actual project work that hopefully we're starting in the summer of 2020, maybe late spring if everything is wonderful.
So all of this work and the, it can all start by next spring?
That is the goal of this entire thing, yes.
And the timeline for completion?
We're basically looking at 12-month construction period, aren't we, Kevin?
No, actually, we, again, if you give us the go-ahead, you know, we still have to start to incorporate and design kind of that October, maybe November, but we'd like to start designing that. We would construct in June, July, August, and you would have new indoor air quality when you open for school next year.
Okay.
For the elementary.
But then the.
And then the rest of the.
The rest of the project would be.
Oh, for the rest of the projects, yeah. So that'll come on, anything internal to the building, but that's going to come on over like the next 12 months. We're kind of targeting November, if I'm going to say this right, and hopefully I can do my math, 2021-ish is kind of the open of the gym. I don't know if we're going to make school open, but we're going to make basketball season, is the thinking at this time.
So can I just kind of like, something, if I'm hearing this correctly, so based off of the 16 million dollar referendum, we did say we would address quality of, you know, air quality, things like that. But did, through all of this, we've felt at some point, we would have to, through different funding options, is that fair to say we would have to address it? We just didn't necessarily know how. Right? I mean, because we were going to address some of the things, but did we always have earmarked to know that we would have to somehow creatively use LTFM or some other funding source to address it?
Yes, throughout, throughout all of this, the 16 million dollar is the general obligation bond sale for the project. But throughout this, there was going to be other funding sources that needed to come into play to finish all of those needs.
Right.
LTFM is a piece of that. Due to what we're experiencing with interest rates, it at least gives us a conversation to potentially look at that health and safety piece. The benefit to bonding both of those is then you get state aid. If you don't want to go the bonding route and you just want to do the energy optimization in the LTFM, then you're not going to get state aid on any of the energy optimization piece. So, yeah, there's going to need to be, all of the tools need to be accessed in order to get everything completed. You know, the softball complex is another great example. That came up at multiple meetings that I presented at, and I was explicit with people that, yes, this is going to include an update to our softball complex. Are we paying for it out of the 16 million dollars? No, we are not. We will be setting aside 200,000 to be able to make some softball upgrades. I think we also will have some community donations. But again, we talked about softball upgrades as part of the project, but it's not necessarily being funded out of the 16 million dollar pot.
And I think that the clarifying point is that all these things are talked about, the 16 million dollars is obviously the biggest funding source, but we maybe didn't do like explicitly, that we were always going to use other funding sources to do the other things that are going with the project. If we're going to do all these renovations, it makes sense to do other things that we maybe have funding set aside for, or different options for that maybe weren't part of the plan. And so I think that's where we're probably going to have to do a lot of communication with the community because maybe that wasn't as explicit or clear. People think, here's 60 million dollars, everything is going into that and that's it. Like here's the package.
And we need to dial back the scope on that too, on some of the other things, just to fit in there, so, yeah.
Because it is, it's confusing.
Let's keep moving on.
Good discussion. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is this final design work. I do believe we should get a final design committee set up and ready to go. In my opinion at least, I think it would be important to include the board chairperson as one of the board members that would be on that committee. I think that's a piece that is important to that. And then we would need two additional board members. Right now, the plan, I actually just talked with Kevin Thurringer from UNESCO today and started to kind of pencil in what that would look like. It's looking like a design meeting at the end of September, the end of October, and the end of November for the full design team. And then he also wanted to have two additional meetings that may be for a specific set of design members. Obviously, a piece of that would be dedicated work just with our CTE instructors, would be a component of that, dealing with the remodel. I'm not quite sure what the other one was, but he's talking about having three full design team meetings and then two additional ones. So we're looking at five total with the idea that we would have the final design work wrapped up by Thanksgiving. That would be the goal in that. So Bruce, I'll let you go from there.
So, and then I've spoken with Matt a little bit about this. I kind of just called everybody to see where you were at to be on the committee. I did have a visit today and a few days ago with MSBA about how we get this all set up and everything, and Matt has a candle on it, I wasn't checking it by any means.
I need checking, so I don't blame you.
But it was kind of an interesting conversation, and we talked about the design team and how we were going to set it up with a committee of three. And the word he said to me was, that's the only way they work. The committee is responsible to make sure all of everybody knows what's taking place and what transpired at those. Another conversation I had again with Matt was to make sure that those not on the committee fully engage in this thing. We don't want to sit back. If you see in the data something that you want to make input, the committee needs to know about that. Because we're going to work it with three, but we have seven members of the board. All of you know how I feel about the seven members of the board and all of us being equal, and I want to be really careful of that. Initial thoughts after all the discussion? I'm thinking I would be on it, Thomas and Maggie at this point. The important part is, there's no way to, a process of elimination from seven to three. The biggest thing is that communication part of it. And that'll be a discussion with, you guys can maybe help us with that too. Because every single member of this board needs to know what's going on as much as possible. But as Gary from the MSBA said, you can't get it done if the whole board's at, well, it happened. You have to, you have to do it in committee, report to the board, and have everybody work through those three. So if that's kind of something that I guess I'd like to leave a set with, we're going to decide it in the next meeting and we will get this all set.
So, yeah, so just moving forward then, at the September 24th meeting, there will just be a new business item. And that new business item would be a design team. That design team would be, the board would be having Bruce and Thomas and Maggie on that design team. It would just be a motion, a second for their conversation, and then a vote, like any other new business item, is how we would go. Just to touch on the communication piece that Bruce is bringing up, and I echo his thoughts with that, I think it's critical that all seven board members are engaged and a part of this. So the one thing that everybody should expect as we go through this process is you will see minutes and summaries from these meetings. And then at each board meeting, whether it be this work session or our business meeting, there will be a standing agenda item that will just simply be the design process. And there will be communication and discussion as far as how that's going and what that looks like and where things are moving with that as we move forward. Questions or conversation or discussion on any of that?
Then we are on the last. Request for information and roundtable. Do we have any topics that we want to address? Or at this point, Matt's kind of running the show, obviously. This project's going to be on here, I'm assuming a regular item. Agreed? Okay, because we have to have that. So as he said, that'll be on there. If we have other topics, anything that comes to anybody, doesn't necessarily have to be here as such, if you have something that comes up. Matt, can you be the contact person?
Yep.
Just get ahold of Matt, and maybe that's a discussion piece that comes here, or how do you want to, how do you want to handle it? If anybody's got any topics, now we want to talk about what we can, and then we will actually add them to our list for next time.
Can I just share, so, okay, say something else?
Yeah, don't say anything, anything.
Thank you. So one thing I've been thinking about, we spend, we're spending a lot of time, obviously, around the building issues, and we're still here with the school and with the teachers, faculty, staff. And so like, I just want to make sure, how do we keep that present? And so with all the changes, it has been a lot, potentially, on teachers that, I don't know what that means, but how do we make sure that there's communication and that we know that kind of where the pulse is? And it was great to hear things are going really, really well. And that's awesome, but, you know what I mean? I don't want that to ever get lost, not saying it is lost, but that we, I don't know what that means or how we would do that, maybe how other boards run that, but just making sure that that is always elevated in our meetings too, because obviously that's why we're doing all this, is that our students are taking care of our teachers.
No, and I would agree. I think that's an important aspect, and I think one thing that I can assure all of the board members, that our administrative meetings, we are spending time talking about those specific things, and whether it be the transition to the block and what that looks like and how can we support those things. That is, it's an ongoing conversation. I have a feeling it'll be ongoing the entire year.
Perfect.
It's not going to go away. So, yeah, I think that's an important piece to remember.
When we were talking about the moving to the block scheduling last winter sometime, we had some of the teachers come in and talk to us. I would like to see some of the teachers come and talk to us halfway through this year. For two reasons, I like to hear from them, but I also want them to know that we're interested and want to hear from them.
And I would agree 100%. I'm glad you said halfway through this year, because I was thinking, if it was supposed to be in two weeks, I didn't quite know what.
So, I mean, it's nice to hear that things are going well, but to be perfectly honest, that means nothing to me at this point in time.
I would agree, even if there was some potential for student volunteers besides, you know, our student board members, if there is any student volunteers that'd like to come in and speak halfway through the year and at the end of the year again, just to.
Well, we'll have the student council come in or.
In December.
In December, and I'm sure we'll get a lot of feedback from them.
Matt and I are, we'll plan on doing a survey in about three weeks or so.
Anonymous survey would be good because.
Some real basic questions.
Yeah, who's going to, what student's going to sit up here and tell us their criticism of it, come on? I really appreciated those who wrote into the newspaper and said, we're voting, no one signed it. I appreciate them because that's hard to do.
Couldn't understand their thing.
I didn't understand their signatures, but I appreciate that they did it, you know, that they put their names out there. And that's, it was an unpopular viewpoint at that point. And I grew up in a culture where if you disagreed, you engaged and you had discussion about it, and that was polite. It's not polite to roll over and just say, you know, whatever you want. I want to know, if you have disagreements, it doesn't mean. you know, whatever you want. I want to know if you have disagreements, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you're being negative and that we can't have a discussion about it. I mean, I want to know if teachers are having issues, not just complaints, you know, that and students are like you say, they're going to, if they don't like math, they don't like math. And they're not going to like it 90 minutes. They're not going to like it 50 minutes. I get it, you know?
Well, and our goal is to create a culture where our students and teachers are comfortable coming to us so that we can gauge and get a pulse of where things are at. And that's the way for us to do some of that is by, is surveys and asking questions.
Yeah.
And us being able to relay our own to you.
Anonymous surveys. Or even students that, you know, we don't need to know who they are or anything, but that are having issues and, or, or the opposite, if they're thriving now or whatever. It's, it's good to hear that from us if we're, I mean, I've got kids there, but even I don't know what goes on during the day, all day. So...
So summarizing, we want to make sure at these meetings, we have a pulse like you guys gave us a little bit. Maybe have some presentations from groups throughout the, the year. I remember when we had the math group, I think that's what you're referring to, Rick. The math group was working on...
That was another one too.
Mathematics programs. They came in and now we had six people all trying to put their minds together to figure out a pathway that was beneficial for the kids. So those are, can we take away that? We just want to stay in touch with that. I think your point is very important that we are still running the school at the end of the day. The building project is a, a project that's going to happen there, but it's not necessarily a priority. The kids' education is still. Is that fair enough?
That's excellent.
Okay. And then if there's nothing else, I think we are done.
Call it a day. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.